Good evening. Thank you and welcome to the Town of Fort Mill's council meeting for Monday, May 13th. We appreciate all of you joining us. If you have any device with you that might ring, buzz, or play us a tune, please turn it on silent so that we can give you our full attention and you can hear us when we speak. So that would be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, council will stand for a pledge of allegiance and then Councilwoman Cook will give us an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and for an amazing weekend in Fort now South Carolina. A Mother's Day that is so meaningful to most of us, hopefully happy memories and big influences by many mothers in our lives. I think we often think about the one that gave birth to us, but there's so many other mothers that impact what we do on a daily basis and who we are. Dear Lord, let us lift them up, lift up the memories we have of the mothers that are no longer with us. And as we come together tonight to do the business of the town, help us to go in your direction and to lead and guide as you would have us guide. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You're beautiful. All right, council members, you have received the minutes for the town council meetings and special call meetings of April the 8th, April the 15th, April the 22nd, and May the 6th. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions?
I have a edit for the four eight minutes. It's a minor edit under presentation two. Chief Zachary's name is misspelled.
All righty. Any other additions, changes, or deletions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the four council meeting minutes and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to section two dash forty-six of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Mr. Pettit, do we have anyone signed in to speak?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Then we're going to move immediately into presentations. Presentation number one of Employee of the Quarter Award to Zach Driggers. Yay!
Thank you, Mayor, council. Tonight's one of the fun items that we get to come up and speak about and it's recognizing one of our own and their good work that they do for the Town of Fort Mill and serving the citizens of Fort Mill. So Zach Driggers, this is the first time I think I've been able to say it's one that I hired. I think I hired you.
You did.
So.
Takes some credit now.
Extra credit, absolutely. So Zach works in our planning department and has been for many years now. And I don't need to recreate the will because I think it was well said and some of our staff recommendations of Zach for the award. Kind person, help you no matter what, a team player. And then I really like this part. He clearly has a heart to service others. And you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, that's what we do here at the Town of Fort Mill. We service others, whether it be utilities, providing zoning information, or providing any of the things, numerous things that we do. We provide service to our community and Zach does an excellent job of doing that. So without further ado, I just want to recognize Zach Driggers as Employee of the Quarter.
All right. All right.
You want the family to come on?
Yes.
I'll hold the baby.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you need help, we'll all hold.
Your daughter actually won, that's why.
Yeah.
Just wanted to see the baby.
We nominate those that have babies, just so we can see them.
Zach, I would like to say that I have never run into you in the town anywhere, be at a grocery store or town hall, that you weren't pleasant and kind and absolutely responsive for anything anyone needed. We need more people like you. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
All right. Presentation number two, Town Website Redesign and Communications Update. Chris Sarnelli.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for having me here today. I wanted to present a review of our current website, website redesign process and a few communications initiatives. And so first, let's see. So the first thing I want to do is just give you a quick recap of how our website has evolved over the last four years. And I'm going to give you a very quick timeline and then we'll move into some statistics that'll give you an example of why we made some of the changes we did. So you may all remember our previous website in February 2020. That's what it looked like. It was not the most attractive of websites, but it.
Looks more like the Halloween band.
It's what we started with, but we ended up moving to a new provider called Civic Plus. We started that process in February 2020 and then the pandemic hit and we ended up finishing this website from our homes in July 2020. But we launched this, this new Civic Plus website, which is miles better than what we had and has a lot of functionality and a lot of, it's much more attractive and much more features. But I'll explain a little bit about why we're doing a redesign. So in November of this past year, we began looking at how to redesign what we currently have. The reason we do that is as part of our contract with Civic Plus, we have the ability to every four years do a redesign. And we actually pay a fee every year into that redesign process. So every year we're paying into it. So we've already paid for this redesign and they, they say every four years is a good idea to just do a quick refresh. And what we did is we met with an analytics team that looked at some of the statistics behind the website to give us some ideas about why, things we should change and things we should stay the same. Our expected launch is in June. That is a very quick snapshot, but I'll, I'll show you a bigger version of that in a minute. So prior to the redesign process, as I was saying, we did what they call an alignment review. We look at the statistics behind the website and we look at how we can improve the performance and the functionality. So I'm going to go through some of these statistics and explain why they're important. So first, we looked from October 2022 to October 2023, just did a year snapshot. We had a total of 217,280 individual users who came on the website. We had a total of 668,431 page views. So that's how many times someone opened one of our pages. And the average time that someone spent on the website was two minutes and 29 seconds. So getting the review from Civic Plus, what does all this mean? Is that good? Is it bad? How do we compare to other municipalities? They said it's very hard to compare towns and cities to each other because they all use their website differently. And we use it for a lot of information. But they said a good website has an average session between two and four minutes. So we're right in the middle of that. Any less, and it said people aren't finding the info they need and any more, they're getting confused and stuck somewhere. So we're right in the middle. They actually said our numbers are exceptional for our population size. So they, they looked at not the most current census numbers at that point, but the previous census numbers. It was almost 30,000. And they said based on that, this is great, page views, they said need to be two times the total users. And ours is about three times. So they said that means that people are accessing more than one page when they come. So that's a good thing. That means people are finding what they need. They're staying to look at something else. Those are all very good. So the next section I'm going to tell you about are the top visited pages. And we'll go through these quickly. But the reason we're showing you these is we made some changes for the redesign based on the statistics. So the number one thing that people visited on our website was online payments, which makes sense. Number two was anything news related. So we have a spotlight and a newsroom section. So anything that's called in behind the scenes, a news flash, we had about 18,000, just over 18,000 visits. I grouped these together, but number three and four of top visited pages were parks and rec and youth sports. And now it's just over 16 and 15,000 visits each. The next, which was interesting, was the search function. Came in at number five with 14,760. And then the last one, the staff directory. So people were looking up town staff and they were using that directory. That was just over 12,000 visits. The next analytic I'm going to show you are our top search terms. And we had about 4,409 total unique searches. That's how many different times someone searched a different term on our website, which is pretty good, they said. Number one, funny enough, was our scarecrow crawl. Next was jobs and employment with 104 searches. Number three was business license. Number four, sports and youth sports. Pickleball was number five. And events as a whole, we just took any time someone searched an event was number six. So what they told us is this was good. It meant that people are coming to our website from more than just one type of thing. And it's not just residents, it's businesses, people who are active in youth sports. So it showed that people are using it for a lot of functions. So what does all this mean? An important takeaways from this website redesign. Number one was update, this is the suggestions from our Civic Plus team. We had a designer and a analytics person. And they said the number one thing they saw was to update our graphic links. And the graphic links, if you remember our website, are those buttons with the graphics almost near the top of the page. Those are the things your users are going to go to first. And they suggested revising those based on your top searches. So take what people are looking for and just put a button there because you know they're going to go for it. Number two is place the search bar in a more central location. So I'll show you our current website. It's a little hidden at the top, a little hard to see. People are still finding it. But they suggested since that was one of the top five things people were using to make sure that was central. Number three, and I've put these at your individual places, department headers for the most visited department pages. And I'll explain this. I didn't have these in time for the presentation, but those are screenshots of, they suggested making your most top search pages look different. And so what we did is we worked with Tony McMahon, our media specialist, to get new photos of the fire department and parks and rec. And then those photos will scroll at the top of those two departments. And it's to make it, make them more, stand out more from everyone else, that people know they're on those pages. Number four is to streamline our news sections and make them more accessible. And I'll show you that. And then the last one was update graphic elements and the color palette. So a lot of the photos are getting updated. We're going back to our branding guidelines and making sure all of our colors match throughout the website. So I am going to show you really quickly, just for comparison, what our website looks like right now. So just to show you what it looks like now and then I'll show you what the draft site looks like. It's a very workable website. People do find our information easily. But we found one of the top things was the search bars kind of hidden here at the top. That doesn't necessarily tell you you can go there. We have the logo twice, which they said was a little repetitive. Some of our buttons are actually more outdated in that style with the old stock photos. And then some of these titles, we realized we can make it a little clearer what they were. So, and we could remove a few. So FAQs we removed. It was not a very top search term. And those are on each website, each individual department page. So we didn't need this. So I'll show you what we ended up changing these two. Our spotlights works pretty good. We didn't change too much about that. But then this section, we did a little bit of an overhaul. This is where all of our news stories go. Our big stories go up on the spotlights, anything with photos or announcements. Everything else, road closures, event times, that all goes down here. What we found is the calendar was a little outdated and hard for people to use. The information kind of got lost here. So we did something different and I'll show you. And then we cleaned up what is down here. We've, on the news site, have added a few more of our new social media platforms like Nextdoor. So this is just to show you what it looks like now. And I'll show you one of the interior pages. We'll go look at Parks and Rec. So this is what the page looks like now. Again, not bad. The information's fairly easy to find, but we did a little bit of an overhaul and I'll show you. So now I'm going to show you the, this now, the Civic Plus is great. They have been working on the redesign on the backend. So the whole site has been created, just hasn't been launched. So we can make changes without turning the old site off or having any interruptions. So I'm going to show you the new site. So this will be what the new site is. Now, this photo will go away. We actually had Tony take about 25 new photos that we can have scroll at the top. And they're going to be a little bit more representative of all the things in the town. So our parks, our events, our staff. What we did is we removed the other logo and instead put the search bar more prominent. So that make it much easier for people to use that function. We've spaced our content up here. All that remains the same. They, they had new concerns. Civic Plus didn't have any concerns with what we're offering. We did update these graphic buttons. And what we did is we changed this to employment. We changed contact us to staff directory to make it a little bit easier for people to understand what are they clicking. And then new over here, we added Parks and Rec. And they suggested that was of all our departments, that was the number one department that was searched across all terms, all visited pages. So they suggested that's obviously something people want to see. So we made that one of our buttons. But we also changed the graphic elements. They've updated it. Everything's a little bit more dynamic. So you know if you're highlighting on any of these images. What they changed for our spotlights, now we will have two sections. One for just stories we want to profile and then one about meetings and events. And they suggested that because some people come just to find out, when's my council meeting? When is the planning commission meeting? And we can better display that information. These will all still basically look the same. We have more dynamic highlighting on there, something that they, they recommended. Now, this is the different section for our news and events. We got rid of the outdated calendar. And now we have the actual events that are coming up. And then we can have it where people can toggle between meetings and events. Because some people, they just want to see events. Some people just want to see meetings. And they don't want to get bogged down in what they're not interested in. So again, all of our news stories regardless will filter here. And then at the bottom, we just cleaned up a little of the content. We added our new X symbol and then Nextdoor because we do have a Nextdoor account that we post information on. So that is the homepage. And I'm going to show you a quick example of what the interiors will look like. Oh, it's not going to show me that. Well, I can probably find it on one of these. So let's see. Well, actually, the, the photos I gave you are actually pretty representative of what those interiors will look like. Fortunately, it's not showing it to me. But what the plan is from here is we've created this basic template. We wanted to bring it to council just to find out if there's any content you didn't see on here that you'd like to see, if there's graphics you'd like incorporated, if you don't like the colors. We have time to make changes. They are expecting our final changes by May 24th. So we have until then to give them anything we want. And I've been working with our project manager. May 29th, we're having a launch prep meeting to discuss the final needs for the project. And then June 13th is the website launch. So we're not changing a lot of content. We're more changing how you access the content and how it looks. So, you know, did you have any questions about the, the website redesign or anything you didn't see?
I know you said you took off the FAQ button. Is it removed completely?
So the FAQs are actually, that button is removed, but the FAQs are still on each page. So what we found was people weren't, people were going more to the department and then looking for their frequently asked question. When they went to that button, it was a little confusing because it's all the frequently asked questions for every department. So we've removed it. They suggested since it wasn't very used. But we left the FAQs on each page. So on each corner, in the bottom right-hand corner, are frequently asked questions.
The, the usage it got was probably from me because I access that one all the time.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe if you could still put it at the bottom under the site links or something, just having easy access to it there. Maybe not a prominent button, but it's just so much good useful information in.
We can definitely do that.
So I think it looks great. It's, everything looks good.
Great.
Any kind of new to Fort Mill type of search?
Good point.
Section connection to Duke Power, York Electric, the school district, or anything like that?
Do we hyperlink to those important resources?
We do. We have links to some of those. And they are under the, I think the, the explorer. And I was going to show you if it comes up. At the top of the website, there's an explorer Fort Mill. There are connections to some of those sites.
Okay. I do know the economic partner site is just about that. If you want to move to Fort Mill also, do you want to start a business in Fort Mill, say kind of also another place. Chris, is there a place on there to sign up for the listserv?
There is. So on one of those previous slides, one of the graphic buttons is to sign up for alerts. And on the, that brings you to the notify me website. And there are about 30 different ways people can sign up to get information. And it's for all different kinds of categories. So anytime I post anything about utility updates or about if there's a road closed, or even about an event, those are all fall into different categories and they're all subscribable. So people can subscribe and get those alerts.
Usually what I recommend people ask questions, I said, just sign up for the listserv and you'll get all the information.
Yes. And we've been advertising and we're planning to do some more advertising to let people know where to go. And, and it works great. Other municipalities nearby use Civic Plus and they also send it out in that, that manner. And it's very useful. People can find out when their meetings are, find out deadlines for applying to different, you know, for business licenses for events. So yes, there's, there's about 30 different ways people can apply.
So who's going to check for, we want to make sure we check for broken links, 500 errors, that type of stuff. Is Civic Plus doing that or is your team doing that?
They will do it. So they have a design team that, and then an implementation team. So before it launches, that's more of what the launch prep is about. They have someone that's going to go in and test everything.
Test every link and.
And they give us a report on broken links and let us know if anything isn't connecting or didn't switch over. So yes, we'll have someone look.
Good. And that's something I would like to say. I get, I point people in this direction probably seems like once a month. Is my road a state road, county road, or town road? Right. So if we could put a link in there and describe it, you know, I don't know what you would call it, but put a quick phrase on it. Is my road, you know, that's a guy live on a town road or something?
Is there the, is there a repository singularly to do that? I mean, because it's, there is.
Yes, ma'am. SCDOT has a street finder app and it'll tell you.
It's really good.
State, county. Well, it says state or local, which we'll narrow it down for them and we can explain what local means.
Dublin would be real good to report, report road, like pothole. They've got a thing where you can tick the report. That'd be a really good one to add to there, too. Because it's not as easy to find on SCDOT.
Right. I have two comments. One, I, I am not the person that jumps out and gets on my computer every two seconds. But I don't like the sections that say contact us because immediately I feel like I'm giving out my email address and opening a doorway I don't want to open. So when you mentioned that we were taking away the directory and replacing it with contact us, it's just the language for me. I'd like for people to be able to find us without feeling like they're going to start getting emails directly from us. So that's just a point. You don't have to do it. It's just a point. For me, more importantly than, you know, I love that it looks better. It needs to be much more functional. But I also want to know, are you the person that monitors it to answer the questions that come in from our community? To me, that's the most important piece. It is to drive information out. But we also open that up so that people can ask of us. So are you the person that does that?
I am, yes.
And do you do that daily?
Chris, Chris and I get those emails both. And we discuss who is the appropriate person to respond or to forward them to. So yes, we are always contacting the residents that have questions about roads or their neighborhoods or power lines. We get a lot of different questions. So yes, we are the ones that primarily respond back.
Mayor, there's a number of different ways that you can communicate with us. So whether it be you're asking for, you have a stormwater issue, there's, there's ways that you can directly go to stormwater. Chris and I don't see those. It goes directly to the staff that handles those. So depending on the content of the question, but Chris, like Chris was mentioning, general questions come through and we see those. But there's numerous different ways where you can get directly to the staff that you need to get to.
Will we also have a tool that will allow us to track trends in those comments? Will we be able to insert a word and it will say we've had X amount of comments to stormwater or scarecrow? There's just got to be a way for us to track trends so that, you know, we're supposed to set policy and, and look at that. It's really hard if we don't have those tools that are coming back to us other than, well, I read an email or I saw a comment. You know, I'm looking for those tools to feed us so that we'll know what we need to address.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we can find a way to do that, that would be great.
We do have a way. Google Analytics is set up behind this website to collect information. I'll have to see how detailed it gets in terms of what you're asking. But I know it does collect, that's where all the information from the statistics came from. So it does collect usage data and even more information than we gave you here. So there's a lot of different things that collect. So we can, I can share that at some point with you as well, let you know how far down it goes.
I want it on a regular basis. What I'm looking for would be like one of the buttons was, how do I get a building permit? And you know, I get comments a lot about this, that, or the other. Well, for us to set a policy, make a change to ordinance or staffing, I need to know how many people are actually, I don't want to just hear the loudest. I want to know how many people and on what context that gives us for making different decisions.
Definitely.
Actually, Google Analytics has that. It's, you could do a monthly dashboard. And I think it'd be great to add to our meeting. And it goes pretty deep. And you can also put triggers on it if you want to. But just what she's asking, it's a, it's a simple report and you can actually generate it monthly and bring it to our staff member. Included in our notes would be very good. It's five minutes worth of work. It really is.
And it doesn't have to be the person that asks it. I'm looking more for content.
Sure.
That we can use to do our jobs better.
And they should be able to generate that easily. And then you should have access to it where you could drill down if there was something specific.
Thank you.
If a topic's getting hot, that'd be a great way to find out.
Well, it's trends. You know, trending, what's trending. We had 100 connections for, and then you can drill down from that.
The initial report we did had dozens and dozens of pages of statistics. And this was just kind of the top level. But you're right, you can, you can drill down to the least viewed page, the, or a term, just like you were saying. So we can get you that.
Yeah, just like you should have access to that dashboard.
We do. Yes.
Yeah. Who would push the topics or, you know, if it's a road closure or something, who would push that up on the website? And how long would that take?
Chris does.
I do that.
Okay. And that is something we can do, you know, within a few minutes if we figure out something.
We do. Yes. So our usual process for when we have important information is it's usually coming from Chris or a department head. We discuss what the urgency is. And then usually within a couple of minutes, I will usually notify council first. Then we usually will put it on social media next. And we have a tool we use called Hootsuite that will send it out to all at the same time. And then we, I'll do our website. We'll post it to spotlights in the newsroom, depending on the, the type of information. Then I send out alerts to subscribers. And then usually if it's important enough, we'll, we'll let whoever else is a stakeholder know, businesses, interior staff. So that's usually our process. And we can usually get that done within about 10 to 15 minutes.
I have noticed an improvement in how quickly we're able to get information out about a sewer line that's broken and we have to close off a street or a road closing for any other reason. That has been vastly improved. So thank you.
Great.
Yeah. I follow us on Twitter and on the listserv and usually I get it pretty quickly. So it's just good job.
Thank you. Chris, are we, have we implemented a survey yet after somebody's filled out an application or gone online to look for something? Asking them, hey, do you have five minutes or two minutes for a quick two-question survey? Did you find what you need? Is there something we can do to improve? Have we enlisted doing that yet?
Not yet. But our plan is to do that once we launch the new site. So we talked about that with our, our design team at Civic Plus. And they said, launch the site and then we can make some alterations as we go after it launches. They said that would be the best way to figure out, is the new site working for people? So yes, we do have a plan for that. And we're going to use Survey Monkey, which is the survey creation software that we've been using for event surveys. And fortunately, we haven't been able to. And fortunately, we haven't been able to do our latest survey, because of the Strawberry Festival, and we had one ready. But we will do one about the website.
Okay. I think you still can, even though we don't have that. We had a month's worth of stuff that happened, so.
Yes.
And another concern I had, or question regarding the analytics, the fact that you had over thirty thousand visits to our Parks and Rec page. Do we know, again, are they finding what they need? Are we making any updates to that page?
They're looking for cancellations for rain that they're looking for.
A very strong percentage of them were for that. So it's youth sports-driven, very heavily. People are coming there to find out, did the times change for the game? Are they canceled due to weather? When to sign up for my child's soccer team? And if someone, it surges after there's a win by a team, like the world champions, or anything like that. So that, yes, that, we've been tracking that. There weren't any suggestions for changing how people, changing the content we have on there, just how we're presenting it. Making it easier for people to find that page, since it is the most requested page.
Do we have an alert people can sign up for, for cancellation, so they get a text for it?
Yes. So there's a Parks and Rec alert. And what we do, either me or anyone in the Parks and Rec department, they will post on there, and it'll send an alert out, just like we do for road closures and severe weather. And so, yes, there's an alert.
It's very helpful.
And we have a alert section on that page that I created for that reason. So if people go to that main Parks and Rec page, and they just scroll down a little bit, there is an alert section. Anytime we post an alert, it posts there, too.
Perfect. Thank you.
And on a simpler note, I went in looking for the recycle calendar. Had a heck of a time trying to find it.
Okay. We have talked about, we're gonna do a little bit of an overhaul on making sure that the items that we know are the most downloaded, like the recycle calendar, or maybe we'll just push those to the top. So we are talking about that. So, yes.
Perfect. A lot of work, and hopefully we will all benefit greatly from it. Thank you.
Great. And there's just a couple more things I was gonna show you really quickly. Just a couple initiatives that we just wanted to give you an update on. The first one was our town newsletter. So very quickly, just wanted to tell you, we started that in November twenty twenty-one. We had a total of two hundred and sixty-five subscribers. As of May of this year, we've reached almost two thousand subscribers. And several of those are actually HOA contacts, so they're sending it out to their whole neighborhood. So it's reaching more than two thousand people.
That's awesome.
We, across the last five newsletters, we've had an average of a seventy-six percent open rate.
That's great.
Which is between twelve hundred and thirteen hundred subscribers each time. It was starting at seventy-five percent in November, the highest was seventy-eight percent in February. We have a click rate, which is how many times someone clicks on the links. And I try to put a lot of links in that newsletter to drive people to our website, and our YouTube, and to show off our different services. Click rate is an average of eight percent, which is very good. I looked up to see, what does that mean? According to MailChimp, which is an e-newsletter, they do a lot of e-newsletters. They did a statistic about what is expected for different types of newsletters. They look at agriculture, schools, and they look at government. They estimate that government and e-newsletters have an average open rate of forty-point-five-five percent, and average click rate of four-point-five percent. So we've surpassed both metrics. Our top clicks in April, we had fifty-three people going from the newsletter, looking at events on our website, or at videos that Tony's made on our YouTube. We had twenty-four for employment, which is really good. We've been trying to drive more people to get jobs within the town. And twenty-two for stormwater, because we've had a lot of stormwater initiatives this year, Second Saturday Service, the art project installation. And so if anyone's interested, we do advertise on the spotlight section on our website, how you can subscribe. And every once in a while, we'll also advertise on our social media. And then the last thing, wanted to show you, we were pretty excited about this, and I'm gonna bring up my prop. We had, for several years, had requests from people within the town, town staff, town residents. Why don't we sell town branded items? And we finally were able to do it. We're pleased to say we're offering four items now. You can see them listed on there. We have our yard flag for fifteen dollars, our tumbler for twelve, our campfire mug for eight dollars, and our tote for fifteen. What we did is, we worked for several months with our IT staff, our finance department, with our CFO, Eric Davis. The town was able to purchase several of these very, very nice Clover handheld credit card processing machines. They're tap-enabled, they print out receipts, they do everything that you want them to do, and they're great. We've tested these at three pre-Strawberry Festival events, and they worked great. We were able to sell thirty-three items across three events, and we used it this past weekend at the farmer's market and sold another ten. People have liked being able to buy something that has their town logo on it, so they can show their town pride. But we're planning to roll this out at future events, and every once in a while, the farmer's market. And the idea was just, again, to foster community pride, and to give people another way to show off their town.
Look at that. We might come up to this century yet.
We're very excited. We're right there.
I've got hope.
You don't have any strawberry shirts up there?
Not yet, but we could find me that one at some point. We had strawberry shirts actually for sale. Yes. There are some that we were selling through our festival website.
Cool. Great.
Just going back to the previous slide, you have the connections. If you add refers on to the Google Analytics, you'll see where they're coming from.
Okay.
So you'll see they're coming from this link, or they're coming from the newsletter, which I know this type of stuff that the mayors ask, well, how do they find it? Where are they coming from? So it's a refer link. I'm sure Chris probably does that, but it's pretty simple. But you can get a lot of information on a dashboard, and then we can figure out what more information we want. Well, I always ask for something else, so just be prepared.
We'll try to get you whatever you need, so.
It's a skill, Chris. It's a skill.
Well, I was gonna say, for anyone watching this, or anyone here tonight, if you're looking for information, fortmillsc.gov is our website. We're on Facebook, on Instagram, and on X. We're also on Nextdoor. You can just search Town of Fort Mill and all those. I left all of you some of our new rack cards that have our events, town information, milestones for this year. And we have those at Town Hall, and they're very popular. We keep having to refill the card holder. So if anyone needs information, definitely can check out any of those sources.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of work. Thank you. We appreciate you. All right, Ms. Chikana, your turn. Presentation number three, twenty twenty-four Fort Mill Farmers and Artisans Market.
Good evening. So Diva is our farmers' market coordinator.
Yay!
Yay, right? So we're just gonna do a little recap of twenty twenty-three as well. So last year, we rotated approximately sixty-eight vendors into the market throughout the year with an average of thirty to thirty-five vendors on any given Saturday. And then our sales for the year were around two hundred and sixty thousand. Occasional features of the market included the York County Ag and Art Tour. We were a stop on that, and then we highlighted our local farm vendors for National Farmers Market Week on social media. We had occasional food trucks at the market. We had a birdhouse building demonstration. And then one of our vendors held a tomato tasting and voting event to help them pick the next type of tomato to plant for the next season. And that was very popular. And then the Fort Mill History Museum hosted Pioneer Crafts with kids on select Saturdays. So this year, we decided to change the name of the market, because we wanted it to encompass everything the market has to offer. So we decided to call it the Fort Mill Farmers and Artisans Market. And this is a big year for us. It's our fifth year. This was our baby during the word we don't want to talk about a few years ago. And it started from five vendors, you know, and to now have what we have, and to see it opening day this last Saturday was amazing. And the vendors were even congratulating us as we walked around on such a successful market. And we have y'all to thank for that, for allowing the town to do this, and your support for it. But this year, Piedmont Medical Center is hosting, is sponsoring this market season. And then we did change a few things for this year. We changed the time from, it was eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. But we found out in the last couple of seasons, the market traffic was really more nine to twelve. And in the heat of the summer, you don't want to be out there any extra amount of time. You want, you want than is necessary. So we changed it to nine AM to twelve PM to better represent that. And we also surveyed our vendors before we did all of these things, too, to get their feedback on these items. So we did have opening day this past Saturday. We had, it was around forty vendors. And it was just a great day, beautiful weather, and the traffic was just amazing throughout the entire day. And then, of course, our market is held at Veterans Park, one oh six North White Street. This year, we only accepted applications through mid-March. Previous years, we have accepted them throughout the season. But we have so many, we've decided just to cut it off and just rotate all of those vendors throughout the season. So all of the vendors were accepted, or that were accepted or put on a waitlist, were notified by April the first. And this year's market, we have meats, produce, eggs, honey, local farm products, baked goods, handcrafted beverages, elderberry syrup, handmade and handcrafted items. And occasionally, we allow local organizations, such as the Girl Scouts, to be at the market, just to try to help them with promotion of that. And then Piedmont Medical Center will be there on select Saturdays, offering free blood pressure checks and other services and information. They really want to be a bigger part of the community, and that's why they wanted to sponsor the market this year and be a part of that. And this year also, we charge five dollars for one space per Saturday. And this year, we required all the fees to be paid upfront at the beginning of the market season. And then this allows just to offset some cost of providing porta-johns and handwashing stations, and some signage that we do for the market. All of our vendors supply their own tents, tables, chairs, and supplies. And then special features for this year, each month, we are gonna have in May, build your own bouquet. June, a pottery making and demonstration. July, make a pennant banner. August, October, through October, we're gonna have candle making, painting, cookie decorating. June eighth is the Ag and Art Tour stop for us. And then July twenty-seventh is an exciting day. We will not have a morning market. We're going to have an evening market. It's gonna be Christmas in July, from July twenty-seventh from five to eight PM. And we're just requiring our vendors to have, like, be decorated for Christmas, even possibly, you know, having, you know, Christmas items for sale, that type of thing. And then we're gonna have some Christmas, Santa's coming to visit for that. They're just having a little fun with that. And then August the fourth through the tenth is National Farmers Market Week. So this year, we did have forty vendors for opening day, and then all the wonderful things we have out there. We had yard games and music, and Knowledge Perk was out there this past Saturday. And we have coffee, of course. Every Saturday, you can pick up your coffee and then travel around to all of our vendors and shop local. This is some pictures from last year. And then we just look forward to another great season of the market.
All right. Great.
Awesome.
Great, great, great. Good job. I think you get to stay there for a while. Thank you. Presentation number four, Memorial Day Ceremony.
I did have a question, though, on the farmers' market stuff. One of the things you mentioned was Farmers Market Week. Is that August fourth through the tenth? Are we open all week, or?
No, no, that's just National Farmers Market Week. And we just promote our farmers, our local farmers, on social media that week. Just talking about them being at the market and what they have to offer. And a little history behind them and things like that.
Since it's a special feature and everything else was about activities, I wanted to be sure that we're clear on that. Do we give any priority on the people with the booth now that we're getting to waiting list in full capacity? Is there any preference given for our priority to residents over non-residents?
Well, yeah, our policy, we state, we search locally first, York County. And then, you know, if we don't find what we need from York County, then we can go to the other counties outside. But we do give top consideration to local people.
Okay. And this is just preference, but I really am struggling that the logo doesn't have our town logo involved with it. Because I think there's a lot of confusion sometimes for people, what's town functions versus outside the towns, you know, our responsibilities. So I think it's really important to keep that consistency going, and make sure we have our logo on our events when it's involving that as much as possible. So I realize it's on the flyer on the back page of it, but I just.
Just be careful about confusing people, just because the town, Fort Mill gets used in many other places. So just a recommendation.
Yes.
That's all.
Definitely.
Anybody else? Comments? Hearing none. We will move to the next presentation for Memorial Day. Thank you.
Our Memorial Day Ceremony, Remember and Honor, will be held on Monday, May twenty-seventh, at Unity Cemetery, three oh three Tom Hall Street, at ten AM. And this special program will feature a reading of the names of the fallen that are buried in Unity. But also, we will accept names from the community. We have special music, the laying of the wreath, the rifle volley and taps. And then parking is available at Town of Fort Mill Utilities Department at one thirty-one East Elliott Street. And these are some pictures from last year and the previous year. And we thank Fort Mill American Legion, Post Forty-three, and the Ladies Auxiliary for being an integral part of this special memorial event each year.
I know last year, there was more shade, and that was really nice for the people that were there.
And it was a little rainy. Maybe it won't be rainy this year.
Still, that was great. I know it was a lot better than even the year before, so that was a welcome thing to have that.
Yes. Yeah, we will have those tents out there, rain or shine. Following the ceremony, we'll have free ice cream that will be provided by Screamin' Cold Treats for everyone. And then, as I said, we not only read the names of the fallen in Unity Cemetery, but we will accept names from our community as well. So if you would like to add your loved one's name to our list, please email that to me, or call me, jhester@fortmillsc.gov, or eight oh three four eight seven five four one three. And just send me those names by Monday, May twentieth. And as Chris said, just for all of the information, visit fortmillsc.gov, and follow Town of Fort Mill on social media.
This has become one of my most special events. I think moving it to the cemetery and reading the names of those that have given their lives for us adds a great deal of, not just sentimentality, but value to recognizing the people that have passed defending our country and providing for us. So I really appreciate all the effort in that, and it always has a great turnout. Just curious, do we have a rain plan?
Yeah, well, if it's, if it's just drizzling, we'll still have it, of course, because we'll have all the tents and everything out there. But if it's more severe, we would need to move that inside.
And do we have special parking or drop-off for people that are handicapped or need assistance?
Yes. We let those just move as close to the ceremony area as possible on the roads coming into the cemetery. But we ask everyone else to park at the utilities.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect.
Chikana, has the signup been sent out through on various communication avenues where people, if they do want to submit names, has that already been out?
We had some last year.
No, I mean, has that been, already been released?
Yes, it's on social media now. And I've actually got a few submitted already.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Presentation number five, Jazz Night in the Park.
This year's Jazz Night in the Park will be Friday, June seventh, from six to nine PM. Of course, it's free admission. It's at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at Walter Elijah Park, three forty-five North White Street. Our opening show features Gina Chambers. She's gonna be bringing her jazzy version of rock and roll eighties and nineties of Aerosmith, Bon Jovi, Prince, and more. She's really well-known around Charlotte, and is just a great singer. Patrick Lamb, he's actually a national touring artist, award-winning vocalist and saxophonist. He has had three top-five billboard hits, so he will be our main show that evening. And I've actually seen him in Charlotte, so he is very good as well. As you can see, he's toured with, you know, Gino Vannelli, Smokey Robinson, you know, big names like that. So it should be a really great show.
It's one of my faves. I love jazz night.
And then, of course, we have a great lineup of food, snacks, drinks, and beer and wine will be available by Comer Hobos and Amore. Our parking is available at Veterans Park, one oh six North White Street, Looms Way, Calhoun Street. Street Park at 203 Calhoun Street, and then our handicap parking is behind Amphitheater. And then, of course, our event rules, I won't read all of them to you, but the main ones are, you know, we only allow service animals, no outside food and beverages, and then no coolers. And then we, of course, we have all those other ones you can find at fortmillsc.gov. And please bring a chair or blanket just to sit and enjoy all the music. And this is some pictures from last year. And then, of course, follow Town of Fort Mill on social media and go to our website.
Wonderful.
Wonderful.
That one sounds really, really enticing.
Yeah, looking forward to that one.
Yeah, me too, me too. Jacana, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And before you leave, I think it's important to recognize you this evening because, you know, between our last council meeting and this one, the event that you worked so hard for all year long, you and your team, you know, Mother Nature got in the way of the finale of that. I think it's important to point out that many of the activities, however, were completed. We had the strawberry beauty contest, the golf tournament, there were many of those activities that did take place. The planning for this is not to be taken lightly. It is a huge amount of work that goes into our strawberry festival. Canceling it was not something any of us took lightly either. I think it's important to note that when some of our vendors and sound people and our bands were, you know, uncomfortable with the situation with the weather and the lightning, we can't put people in an unsafe position. We've said this before from the council bench, safety first. And canceling it was very difficult for all of us, but I know it had to be for you in particular and your team of folks. So I want to say thank you. You know, that's really hard to plan essentially for a wedding or a prom and then not get to go. So I know that that had to be trouble, but please know that we all appreciate the effort that went into that and we will have another one next year. So thank you so very much for the effort and the work that you all put into this. We appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to recognize you, our whole town department, Events Committee, you know, that is representatives of all of our departments, you know, all the work that they poured into it, and our strawberry festival committee, everyone just poured in so much work. And it was disheartening, but we do put safety first.
Safety has to be first.
And I think this is a better time than at the end when I was going to say it, but thank you to all the local vendors that accommodated many of the strawberry festival vendors who had wares to bring in, things that needed to get sold. I think a lot of them ended up having a very successful virtual sale or sale at some of the stores here locally. So it's great to see the community come together and really make the most out of it. I mean, we said it, make lemonade out of lemons, you know, and that's really what happened. It just happened to be strawberry lemonade this time.
Right, right.
It worked out well, so thank you.
That's right. Well, thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right, we're going to move, there are no old business items, so we're going to move directly into new business. New business item number one, first reading and ordinance establishing a broadband services franchise agreement with Google Fiber, Inc. Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff was approached not too long ago by Google and their Google Fiber team for the purposes of entering into a franchise agreement, sorry, I said Google and my phone went crazy, for the purpose of entering into a franchise agreement to serve the Town of Fort Mill with their internet services. Their entry into the South Carolina market has given them an opportunity to move towards our direction with their infrastructure. By being into the market already, they worked closely with the Municipal Association of South Carolina to come up with the draft franchise agreement that was presented to you in your agenda packet. So should council move forward with the ordinance which will require two readings, Google Fiber would have the authority to enter into the Town of Fort Mill to provide their services and in accordance with the state law, provide the town a fee based off the town's population as far as the franchise agreement fee was concerned. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I need your keys, Mayor. I understand. We have, would you, somebody make note of that, please? Okay, any questions for Chris?
Yeah, I think it goes back to the basic question that we ask often, is this good for Fort Mill? Is it required of Fort Mill? Can you give a little bit more of why we're sitting here, other than them asking?
It is not required of us to do. It would offer an opportunity for Google Fiber to utilize their right-of-ways within the town to install their infrastructure and serve the citizens. It's ultimately a policy decision at council whether you consider it good for Fort Mill.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So the agreement, is this the one the Municipal Association actually is using throughout South Carolina?
Yes, this was, Google and their product is a little different than a lot of the other telecommunications companies that have franchise agreements that are more standard. You know, a lot of folks offer internet, you know, cable, phone, they just do fiber. So the state law and how it's written required Google working with the city of T K, who was the first community to work with Google Fiber, and the Municipal Association to craft a new franchise agreement specific to their offerings and what the state law requires of them. So this was the draft that was prepared for that purpose.
Yeah, they're offering internet and they're saying not, no video services, but internet and internet IP phones. So you mentioned the payment is based on population. So I saw it's just according to this one is a thousand-dollar annual fee.
Correct.
Is that, I'm not sure that's.
Strictly by state law.
That's the way, okay, that's, that was my question. And then in section 10, and I'm sure Barry looked at this, but they're going to always look at termination, how they get, so we basically, we're locked in for a, just trying to read my handwriting from earlier today, we have very limited termination abilities, but they can terminate without cause, with just 180-day notice. So do we have any concern? I don't know why we want to terminate the agreement, but I'm just, I always try to look at things on our, in our best behalf. Watch out for us.
I can't speak to explicitly this terminology here, but I can say that's pretty standard in all of our franchise agreements, given the amount of infrastructure and the amount of funds that they're committing to that infrastructure in the communities.
Okay, and it's very, I mean, I don't have a heartburn in particular, but it's just, you know, we have no rights to terminate, they can top it, 180, I think it's a five-year renewal is what it is.
And I would think too, that each individual that purchases service from them gets a similarly worded agreement so that they would understand what they were purchasing and that they could, they don't provide any guarantee of long-term or forever service. I don't think anyone can do that. So I think it's, you know, separate from us allowing them to come into town and serve our community. It's not so much that they're going to become our client or our customer, you know, they're allowing, we would be allowing competition into our territory. And I do think it's important to note, you know, that Comporium has predated me here and I'm old as dirt, so, you know, I think it's, these are the days where there's no such thing anymore as just one service provider. So I think it's important to note that this is just a competitive market now and we should anticipate others as well following.
We have Spectrum in Massy as well. Is this going to be open to all? So is Google going after a specific area that they're trying to hit mainly commercial or are they going to be open for all residential or?
This would be, this ordinance would allow them to work with anywhere within the town limits of Fort Mill. It would be up to them and their, you know, market decisions whether they go left or right first or, you know, decide to hit the whole town or, you know, not. But this would give them that leeway to go, you know, anywhere throughout town.
I'd just like to kind of clarify that, I read the agreement pretty closely. All we're doing is giving right-of-way to our right-of-way. We're not giving them any access, we're not, we're not saying they're good, they're bad, we're just letting them use our right-of-way.
What type of customer are they?
That would be totally up to them. I'm just saying, this is just the right-of-way.
I think I understand what both of you are saying.
Yeah.
Elise is asking, are they here to pursue just commercial customers or just residential customers? And you're correct, we're only giving them access to a right-of-way.
I can speak to that a little bit in just some of the meetings that I had with them, that they're, they're very high on their commercial offer, excuse me, their residential offerings. Their commercial offerings is something that they're still getting a hold of. So their target would initially be their residential offerings to neighborhoods and residential areas. I don't think their initial goal would be commercial areas because that's not what they consider, and this is their words, their strong suit at this point in time.
Perfect, that's great, that helps. And I would recommend, we might want to have Mr. Sardelli have some information, at least a link to them, because we may get questions once this, if this moves forward, just asking. And then, do we expect any kind of disruptions from them having access to those right-of-ways? So will we, you know, put notices out there that utility work will be doing in a certain area, just like we typically would?
Yeah, so they're currently working in the T K area and they're working very closely with the staff over there to communicate where they're going to be, because there are going to be disruptions, there's going to be, you know, obviously contractors for Google Fiber and/or Google Fiber themselves working in folks' yards in the right-of-way, trenching in their fiber services. So there will be, you know, inconveniences, I guess, from the construction of their infrastructure and the build-out of their infrastructure. But they've been really good in explaining their process to us, agreeing to sort of work at our pace should, you know, the communication and things need to keep up, should the, you know, there be any issues or anything like that. They've been really good in talking us through that process should council decide to move forward in this direction. So yes, there will be inconveniences as with any construction-type stuff.
Perfect, thank you.
Interestingly, should they cause too many interruptions, it would hamper their ability to bring on new customers. So I would think that would be first and foremost as they bring in a system.
First impressions are always very important, so this is a big one for them.
Yes.
So it's going to be a combination of underground and overhead or just strictly underground or how will that work?
My understanding is strictly underground.
That's what I understand.
Okay.
Okay, this is a first reading. Chris, will we do a second reading at our next thirty, thirty days from now?
Correct, a second reading, there's no public hearing.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? Otherwise, I need a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number one.
Thank you.
Oh, second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed. And we have one abstention. Okay, all right. New business item number two, first reading and ordinance amending the Town of Fort Mill's firework regulations for public displays. Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. The Office of the State Fire Marshal has adopted a new process, a review and permitting and licensing process for folks that are wanting to do public displays of fireworks. That's anybody that's shooting off on property that is not theirs for the purpose of, I hate to say, public display. So staff has developed a revision of our code to require that any public display of fireworks be conducted only after obtaining a license and permit through the Office of the State Fire Marshal and after providing any required notice and meeting any additional requirements of Town of Fort Mill's Fire Marshal. Following adoption of this, the Office of the State Fire Marshal, they would be the enforcement authority on this, they would be the review authority, and they would be that reviewer of any public displays.
This is something that I spoke with Chris about because I am beginning to recognize those areas in which we have ordinances, but no real capability of enforcing those. Certainly in the Town of Fort Mill, we have an ordinance against fireworks, but, you know, we don't have enough officers and staff to, you know, go street to street every time we have an event. So it's impossible, but this would add one layer of protection that if your neighborhood or someone's wanting to do a display in a park or a business, that there's another layer of protection that they must go through the state and follow the criteria provided for others to do so. So I think this is a very good thing for us as one step in that direction. Now, mind you, anyone watching this tonight, if you so desire during a holiday to go out on, say, a golf course and do wheelies and do fireworks, somebody's going to call us and we will come. And we will have a right to take action, punitive action, for someone that's breaking that ordinance. Can't stop you from doing sparklers and rockets from your driveway too much, but if you get reported, we certainly can take action and will. So just want to make sure it's very, very clear that this is something that we would do for the larger, you know, a lot of neighborhoods now that like to do this.
And maybe this, you know, safety is key here, so there's a class that anyone that would be shooting these off would have to go through and get a license to be a licensed shooter. So the HOA, they would need a licensed shooter to go through. And then, obviously, on a case-by-case basis, they review the plans for any public displays and where it is, make sure it's safe and things of that nature.
Chris, the only thing I'd say, I agree, I just think I would define what you mean by public displays. I think it's inherently clear, but don't assume anything.
Correct, it's listed in the ordinance to refer explicitly to the state law and how it's defined there.
But it doesn't state it, it refers to 71, 8305, you know, that's, but just say public means X or something, just, I can see it would help clarify a lot of odd questions.
Well, it's certainly discerned.
I think HOA is a good example, neighborhoods, that's a good.
It would discern between a group of people on a cul-de-sac as opposed to an entire neighborhood taking action or hiring someone to do them.
Correct. The reason I did that is because as defined, it could take a page for me to define it as it's defined.
Or maybe you want to add that language to it, because that's the only way to define what you mean by public, so I got you. But otherwise, I agree.
It's just one more step to doing a better job managing the safety aspects of fireworks during holiday times.
It's an option, Chris, is having a link to that section just so it's easy to find sometimes. But I'm still a little confused of, we have an ordinance that says you can't do fireworks in the town limits, and now we're doing this. Are we contradicting ourselves or?
No. No, I don't think so. I'll let you answer, but in my opinion, we're reinforcing, because if you have a license, because the town can fire fireworks at an event.
The prior ordinance said that you can do public displays with council approval. And I'm not saying anything against council's knowledge of fireworks, but the Office of the State Fire Marshal, you know, certainly has gone through this and established this process of the ways to make this safe and the ways to make sure that someone who is knowledgeable in shooting these things off. So the only change is we're taking council out of that picture of approving public displays and putting it on the Office of the State Fire Marshal. So that has been the only change. The shooting of fireworks in general, you know, from your backyard, that's still not allowed in the town. So this is allowing those large public displays if you follow the right process, if you're safe in doing so and such.
Awesome, thank you for that clarity. And do we have a lead time of what that approval process, how long that will take with the state fire marshal?
Yeah, it doesn't take long to do, as far as its paperwork and things of that nature. The license is probably the longest thing because there's a test involved in getting your license. But it's not a long process. Our fire marshal is very close to a lot of the bigger HOAs and things, the people that, you know, have been doing this. So he's already in communication with a lot of those folks, so getting that ball rolling now.
Okay, and last one, just because it's not in here, what's the cost to get that license?
I do not believe there is one.
Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you.
As we get closer to Fourth of July and everything, can we, with our social media, put out there just kind of reminders to people that it's illegal, but there'll be kind of time limits or caps put on it before it gets clamped down on?
We always get, we always get a lot of serious concerns in regards to children and pets. Or, you know, if we have a dry season, I've seen us have some very dry times and have so many in my front yard that I don't know how, you know, it didn't burn the house down. But I do think, you know, the more information on this particular item, because there are other holidays, you know, graduation parties and Fourth of July and New Year's, that people have a tendency to do that.
Yeah. And seeing as it's an ordinance, we have to do a motion, correct?
That's correct.
Then I make a motion to approve new business item number two.
I'll second.
All those in favor, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. All righty then. New business item number two, first reading and public hearing and ordinance amending the zoning map of the town of Fort Mill to change the zoning designation for York County tax member, tax map zero-two-zero-one-two-zero-one-one-one-nine and a portion of tax map zero-two-zero-one-two-zero-one-two-seven-four containing approximately fifteen point five seven three acres located in the vicinity of North Dobie's Bridge Road and Fort Mill Parkway from PND or Planned Neighborhood Development to Highway Commercial Zoning District. This is in Ward Four, Councilman Moody, and Penelope is our subject matter expert. Penelope, we need to open the public hearing first. So with this, we are opening the public hearing for anyone that would like to speak to this item. Anyone? Would you like to, anyone? We're good? All right. We're closing the public meeting with no comments made. Thank you. Penelope, what you got for us?
Good evening. This is an application to amend the zoning map from Hare Cedar Properties LLC in care of Ted Barnes from Durbin Development. There's two parcels about fifteen acres that need to be rezoned to complement the other parcels of the whole Hare Cedar depart, um, excuse me, development. And this, like the mayor stated, it is going from the PND to Highway Commercial District. It went to the Planning Commission in October and it was recommended approval by six to zero. The TIA updated, what, excuse me, a TIA was updated and we have all that information. We're just waiting on the transportation mitigation agreement to be signed before second reading.
Are the two gentlemen in the back with Harris Teeter? We want you. We want you as quickly, could you do it yesterday? Is there a possible way we can help you do it yesterday? So we just want you to know that, okay? I bet it's not. We get calls every day, are they coming? Are they coming? Are they coming? So we definitely are very excited and look forward to the day that we all can attend. So thank you. Let us know what we can do to help.
And that's all that I have, yes.
Okay, council, do you have any questions? Please don't. I'm teasing. I'm only teasing. I'm only teasing. Questions?
Sure. So Penelope, the outlined area there is the fourteen, fifteen acres or whatever.
Yes.
So the area to the left of that, that runs back over to White Grove is not part of that.
That is correct. Yes. There's a sliver still that it's going to be zoned, PND. Obviously, they would have to come back. You know, initially, I guess ten years ago, they were looking at possibly residential back there. We have not heard of anything. So this is not part of the zoning change to Highway Commercial at this time. That's why it's a portion of that one tax map number.
And I saw where, you know, we're just talking about zoning right now. I saw what was in the packet about, what's planned for this additional property. My, well, it runs, it abuts our park, which is not necessarily a concern. It is something to be thought of. But I'm all for the current location of Harris Teeter. Believe it or not, we really, we do want you there. But it affronts a major road. I have a little heartburn making some Highway Commercial that abuts a park, does not directly attach to a major road. And it also, now we're starting to creep into North Dobie's Bridge, what's opens up, you know, for being contiguous, opens up another, kind of a can of worms. So I.
If I may, go back to that map.
I think Penelope's going to help you.
That's why I'm asking the question.
She always does.
Okay.
It doesn't work.
Oh, wait here. Kind of. Oh, it doesn't work on the TV. Okay.
Well, you can go for it. Fingers work well.
I'm not tall enough. So that area next to the park, that's a good question, Ms. Wolf. That, for this, it's going to be zoned Highway Commercial, but a lot of it is going to be the open space for the Harris Teeter. So what they're planning on for that section of that parcel is an extra out parcel that's going to be Highway Commercial. But then there's wetlands and there's also a budding the park that's fronting on North Dobie's Bridge that will be open space. So there won't be exactly buildings, yeah.
The road kind of comes in, ultimately it's going to tie and, and this is a terrible drawing here. It does tie into Dobie's Bridge there, but it's all planned, pre-planned as part of their development. So as far as access points, there will be an access point where current Mary Henson Court is today, but.
So that sliver right there off of Mary Henson Road, is that going to be a future?
Yeah, it squares all this up. So you kind of got out parcel. Again, I'm doing a horrible job of doing this, but it squares things up to where you've got out parcels here. Sort of the main Harris Teeters here, so. Yeah, really poor drawing, but hopefully you get the concept.
Well, I see a map on page ten of the handout, which kind of shows where the parking lot would be and where the Harris Teeter would be. It's just not, that's not what we're reflecting in this. That's why I was curious.
Where were they?
I'm comfortable with what is planned.
Well, I'm glad you are. I'm not saying I am, but.
Well, I know you're not and I'm doing everything I can to be as kind and as gentle.
Where were the gas, eventually, I mean, it's just hard for me to read this map.
Can I approach the bench?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
And just quick clarification, everything that's in red or pink on here is Highway Commercial already, correct?
That is correct.
So that people seeing may not be able to see that designation.
So just the middle one essentially?
And that'll connect this, and they already own, yeah, and they already own this section.
Yeah, and then this is staying PND for now. It's not part of the parcel.
Yeah, that's a much better picture. I don't disagree.
So I have a question for the gentleman in the back. I mean, do we have a timeframe for when this could happen, please? Because we do get it every week, every Sunday at church, every time we're in the grocery store. Why do I have to come to Walmart? When's my Harris Teeter? I mean, just go prop the sign up so it's upright for me so we can get some hope.
The sign's down.
That was down?
Well, the Durbin sign's down.
Allow me, I can fill in a little bit of that. I realize I had to wave my hand before the camera.
Oh, you come on up. You can have my seat. Come on up, please.
I'm Walter Fields. Ted was not able to be here tonight. He had another business commitment. So I'm sort of sitting in. And Penelope and her staff have been shepherding us along for quite a few years on this project. I feel like I do owe you an explanation about how it's been so long since we were here the last time when this board approved the bulk of the center. Some of it is just timing. Went through COVID, everything got slowed down. The Kroger development process is a lot more complicated than the old Harris Teeter process was because we just breezed through things with Harris Teeter. We actually submitted road plans to SCDOT last spring for the abandonment of Mary Henson and some other things. And they said, well, we think you need to update your traffic study. The floor area numbers moved around a little bit, didn't significantly change in terms of the total, but the trips actually were reduced because the grocery store is smaller. Still sixty-one thousand feet, so it's a good sized store. When it was time to start doing the counts for the traffic study, it was summer and you can't do counts when school's not in session. So we lost three months there. And we've been working with the staff and with Kim Lee Horn to get them the information they needed. We finally got the finalized study from Kim Lee Horn, I think, February, so just a couple of months ago. And then it took us that time to get our act together and get back down here. And the draft agenda item includes all the transportation commitments and things that come from the traffic study. All of that will be done in a timely fashion. And the start date, according to Ted, is they're going to break ground in October.
This October?
And hope to have the grocery store.
Twenty twenty-four?
That's what I was going to say, what year?
This year.
Woo, let's all have a Halloween.
Don't want to be the grand marshal in the parade this Christmas.
I hear you, Chris.
Let me tell you that I'm quoting directly from Ted Barnes. But he's made it clear he's going to get chewed out by Harris Teeter if something doesn't start happening pretty soon. So that's why we're here tonight. That's why we're hopeful that y'all will consider this in the first reading and let us finish this development out like we planned it years and years and years ago. And that piece in the back still is shown on the original site plan as a future residential environment, could be town homes, could be something else. But it's not involved in this particular rezoning, which adds in a few pieces that took us a while to acquire.
Yeah, thank you.
I hope that's.
Oh, yeah.
Music targets.
And the other townwide vicious rumors that you guys are dragging in at Chick-fil-A with you, we're just hoping that that happens. Can we put you on record now to say you're a farmer?
I have no firsthand knowledge of individual tenants except for the Harris Teeter.
Good answer.
Are you saying that's a good thing or a bad thing?
It'd be a great thing.
No, it's not.
I'll make a note.
Traffic.
I'll make a note.
Yeah, I saw a news flash where y'all starting a store at the same time in Charlotte.
I'm sorry, sir.
I said you started another store in Charlotte at the same timeframe, weren't you?
I don't know what else they're doing in Charlotte. You mean the Harris Teeter?
A news flash came out today that y'all were starting two stores, one in Fort Mill and one in South Charlotte.
All right. I don't work for Harris Teeter. I work for the developer. So I don't know what Harris Teeter's plans are on any side except this is my main focus right here tonight.
Thank you for coming and giving us good news, good update.
We're thrilled.
We're glad to have you here.
Well, we are too because it has been sort of a struggle to get here. But all the pieces have come together and we've gotten some assistance from some other higher source. And so now we're, now we're hoping that that will continue through the process and we can start work as soon as possible.
And believe it or not, the location of that Harris Teeter will assist with some of us that live on that side of town having to drive to Indianland or up on one sixty to get groceries. So it will be as, I would like to think, a little bit of a traffic mitigator to say that we're not all having to go from our neighborhoods on that side of town a way to get our groceries. So I think there's some good to come from.
Oh, I agree. A lot of people bring up extra traffic. I know it'll localize the traffic because those people have to go to the grocery store now and they're just driving across town. So making it more local would actually help traffic.
It will.
But this is a site that y'all had already determined would be a great location for a community center. And so here it is. You can, when did you submit some drawings recently?
About two and a half weeks ago. We actually.
Trying to get a jump on it.
Sorry, Nolan Groves.
Well, bring them on up here now while we're here. We'll take care of it.
My name is Nolan Groves. I'm with Urban Design Partners. We're the civil engineer, landscape architects and urban planners for this site. We actually submitted full construction documents for review to town staff about two and a half weeks ago. Ultimately, preliminary plats, different things have to be approved, the rezoning has to be approved. But we went ahead and submitted those documents, so they are in the queue for review so we can go ahead and get comments back and make any necessary revisions as soon as possible.
Great. So the first of October, you'll see seven people with their little athletic chairs out there watching.
I would challenge you to do a wider parking spot like public stuff. They do ten feet, they do ten, whereas the normal is nine.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very excited. Very.
We are too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, do we have any other questions before they disappear?
And just to let y'all know that next month, actually not next month, this month, May twenty-first, Planning Commission, we have the preliminary plat for the overall development. So this development is, has a name. It's going to be Catawba Ridge Market. And so that preliminary plat will come through the PC to approve this month.
Yeah, there's a lot of details in the traffic impact studies and that's what we were asking, you know, where's this? Where's the gas pump? It's going to be, yeah, that shows you that.
All right. Chris and Barry, we had two number, business items number two, had the same number. So we're going to call this one business item number three and I will correct moving forward. So any further questions before we vote on the first reading of business item number three?
Mayor, we actually have a business item three.
I know. I'm going to correct as I move forward.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. Any further questions? Hearing none. I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item number three.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Thank you. Best news of the night. Great. Uh huh. So we're going to move to new business item number four, which was previously a number three. It is a resolution for public events in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed and consumed to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment for these events. Jazz Night in the Park, twenty twenty-four Downtown Merchants Holiday Events. This is for the approved road closures during town events hosted at Walter Elijah Park and the following parade, July the third, December the fifth, December the seventh. Twenty twenty-four Weekends on Main, October fourth through the sixth, October eighteenth through the twentieth and twenty twenty-four Main Street Jams, June fifteenth and September twenty-one, Jakana. These are standard requests that we make for events that require this type of authorization, correct?
Right.
Barry, do I have to do a vote for each individual?
Hallelujah.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jakana? Hearing none. Will someone make a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item number four.
All right. I have a motion and a second from Councilman Moody. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Information discussion item number one, fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget status report. Eric Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have two items for information or discussion, but the first of which is just an update on where we are with the current fiscal year. As you know, we go from October one, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And you ask and we provide for you on a monthly basis, basically a report of where we are for this year's budget. This report is through the end of March of twenty-four, so we're right at fifty percent, which is why we're giving a little bit of a talk with you tonight. So very briefly, in the general fund, you can see that to date we've collected almost twenty-one and a half million dollars. Through fifty percent of the year, we've collected sixty-eight point one percent of our revenue, which is really good. On the expenditure side, we're at about sixteen point one million and expenditures are roughly fifty-three point nine percent. So to date, we've collected about five point three million more than we've spent. As the fiscal year draws more to a close, that gap will reduce. The biggest thing that is driving those numbers is that we've already collected over a hundred percent of the property taxes that we budgeted for. So that's a huge driver there. On the second page, in our gross revenue fund or the water and sewer fund, you can see that on the revenue side, we've collected almost nine point four million and spent about almost seven point five million. So to date, we have revenues over expenditures of almost one point nine million dollars. We see there on the percentages to year-to-date, both are under fifty percent. So one of the things that we look at is we want to make sure that expenditures are not outpacing revenues. But all of them are down a little bit, so that is something that we're going to be keeping an eye on and we're going to be watching particularly in the next couple of months just to see if there's any trends that are occurring that we need to maybe bring some recommendations to you for consideration in the future. Stormwater fund, you can see revenues of just over a million dollars and expenditures of just over half a million to date with about a hundred and sixteen thousand of encumbrances. So again, that fund is still strong. I won't go into all the details with regards to the special revenues, but we, the impact fees that we've received are a little bit less than what has been budgeted, but that's okay. That's just demand driven. And at the bottom, you can see our cash position for the town, both at our central depositor and our savings is very strong indeed. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Eric, on the impact fees you were talking about is that, I know we look at building permits and things like so, or do we think we're going to hit our original budget? Or is it, is it building coming slower than what we anticipated?
Some yes, some no. I think the fire impact fees, probably so. Parks and Rec impact fees, probably not. Again, it's, each impact fee is based on the type of development that comes before council. So a lot of times, you know, budget is an educated guess. So, but fortunately for us, you can. So, but fortunately for us, you can see the reserves on the far right column there. So if there are projects that council would have, we have those reserves to fall back on.
Well, I was actually kinda following up if was our projections, our methods correct or not, because some things are truly an educated guess on what's gonna happen.
Aren't those typically forecasted based off of residential growth, Chris?
Right, yeah. We typically do budget just based off forecasts and residential, just because commercial is so much harder to pinpoint if it's gonna come or not. So we're typically conservative in our estimations of what residential will come. Typically, it's developed through conversations with known developments that are coming or are active now and how many permits they anticipate to issue every month. This would be through the winter months, and typically those are slower. Typically, things do warm up, pun intended, with the summer months, and so they should catch up a little bit.
Eric, when you're staying on the impact fees, when you look at the relationship of the Parks and Rec impact fees versus the other two, there's a significant difference in the percentages.
Right. We can take a look at that again to see. Sometimes certain fees are applied to certain developments and other fees are not. So we can just go back and take a look.
Yeah, if you'll just check, because the relationship's off there compared to the other two. Just wanna be sure it's correct.
What was the 134 in ATAX that went out? Was that just when we voted earlier to disburse some funds?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. So you get this report monthly, but with this, this report or this month for, through the end of March, being six months throughout the fiscal year, we wanted to make sure that we were here talking with you a little bit to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for providing.
Very nice to receive this.
But anytime you get these, as we go from month to month, please, please let us know. Shoot us an email if you have questions. We'll be happy to try to answer those.
Very.
Appreciate it.
It's very good. We certainly appreciate it.
And quick question, real property taxes, that's typically received in fiscal year, no, calendar year Q1, correct? So we're at 100% already, but that's typical. We usually get it all in Q1.
Not all. Some also in Q2.
Okay.
Fiscal year Q2.
It's weighed heavier. Okay, thank you.
Further questions on Eric's Fiscal Year Budget Status Report? Extraordinary.
Thanks, Eric. Great to see you.
Thank you. All right, Eric, you're up again.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion regarding the Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Adoption Calendar.
Yeah, so we're turning our eye already to the adoption of next year's budget, which would start October 1. So what you have in front of you is a proposed calendar for adopting a budget. This is pretty, pretty close to what you had calendar-wise for adopting this current budget, so there's not a lot that's really out of, or unique about it. The only thing that I would really draw your attention to are really those items in red on the top half of the page. Those are, those are things that are a little bit unique. We do have a capital improvement plan that is expiring. So one of the things that we want to do is update that. So we would plan on having a couple of meetings where we could, we could go through that, and hopefully staff can give you some information and kind of walk you through that process. That would be built off of the June 17 meeting where we would hope to present to you a forecast model that'll give you a 10-year projection of where we plan to be financially, so. But you can see that we lay things out each month with the adoption phase really starting in August, and then notifying York County on August 28 of the millage rate. I know that's always a dance that we have to do with the differences in the fiscal years between the local governments. Then with the public hearings in September with the new year starting October 1. So again, I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Mr. Pettit, we have a May 3 date on here, Town Manager Sends Budget Instructions to Department Directors. Did that happen?
Yes, Mayor. The department heads have all their information that they need. I don't know exactly what date it gets sent on, but the department heads have the information they need to input the budget and their personnel requests for the next few years. And so they're working on that. Eric and I have been working on the revenue side of things, so the budget is in full swing.
Excellent.
And while it's not directly with budget, it is with the finance team. It'd be nice to have a little asterisk or just a reminder of when the audit season's gonna happen to make sure that's on the calendar too. I know, again, it's two different buckets, but it's nice to be able to know where that has to fit in, because there's a lot on your plate with that.
Sure. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because if, Mayor, if you will allow me, I have two, two, two additional items that we learned today.
Good.
So number one, we did receive our rating from Standard and Poor's in anticipation of issuing bonds later this month for the acquisition of the new town hall. So the town was rated AA+, which is one notch below AAA. So the bonds that we will be issuing will be rated as AA because it's an installment purchase revenue bond. So it'll be one notch off our, our regular rating, so those bonds will be issued at AA. So we did get that final report this morning. So that has been circulated to all of the parties involved, and and we're ready to go with that. So with regards to the audit, we did receive the final audit from our auditors today, shortly after lunch. So we are completely up to date with our FY '23 audit. It has been submitted to the state and to all the agencies, so we are current. And so a huge help goes to Green Finney, our auditors. They really worked hard to get us this document. It was, it was a lot of work to do that. But our finance team now is doing everything. It's basically now in the hands of the lawyers and the bankers to set us up for a closing. So those of y'all that are in the real estate market, you know what all the paperwork is to get a closing done. Well, we got a big one coming up here in about two and a half weeks. So we have everything that we need. We're ready to go.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you.
Buy yourself another Mountain Dew.
There you go. Will do.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric. So very nice to have those. We do have a number of executive session items this evening. Please note that counsel may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. We have item number one, Discussion of Contractual Matters Relating to the Purchase of Real Property. Number two, Discussion of Potential Sale of Real Property Located at 112 Confederate Street. Item number three, Receipt of Legal Advice Relating to Potential Claims and Ongoing Legal Matters. Item number four, Discussion Incident to Personnel Matter Regarding the Search for a Town Manager. And item number five, Discussion of Potential Sale of Real Property Located at 200 Tom Hall Street. Again, I think it's fair to note, we do not vote in executive session. We receive guidance and information. So I will accept a motion for us to go into executive session.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session. I would like to have a motion to return to regular session.
Make a motion to return to regular session.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Thank you for the business that we have conducted this evening and all the hard work that council has done. The reflection of the number of minutes taken is a true reflection of the effort that everyone has given to give up their family time and meet the numerous times that we have to try and get the special projects and the work done to serve our community. And for that, I'm very thankful. Ben, what do you have for the good of the whole?
First thing that came to mind was the public reaction to, the majority of the public reaction to the Strawberry Festival being canceled. I think that the, the majority of the public understood that it was in safety's interest and from the, it was not just a random decision that the town made. There was a lot of influencing factors and things, so the outpouring from the community, I thought, was overwhelmingly supportive and positive, and for that I appreciate, because there's a lot of people that tend to hide behind a keyboard and pull insults and things like that that are non-factual, and they don't really know the background behind it. So thank you to everyone that supported that decision, because it was incredibly disappointing.
It was. Thank you. Alan?
Two weeks from now is Memorial Day, and as I was last year, was involved in the Murph Challenge. This year, we're calling it the Fort Murph. So for those who don't know, it's Lieutenant Michael Murphy. He was a Navy SEAL, died in Afghanistan, June 28, 2005. And the workout was their workout of the day, and that was his workout. And for those who don't know, it's a mile run, 100 pushups, 100, excuse me, 100 pullups, 200 pushups, 300 squats, and another mile run, all while wearing a 20-pound weighted vest. And a lot of service members do it every year on Memorial Day to not only to celebrate and to remember all who had passed, who served in the military. So we're doing one, like I said, for the second annual at the print shop right down the road here, and just encourage everybody to come and.
What time, sir?
8:00 AM, I think. So we're gonna have colors, we're gonna have national, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a cool event. We're gonna DJ all kinds of cool stuff. So come on out, do it, or just come watch us all do it.
Cheer you up.
I'll watch.
I might come watch. Because 20 extra pounds would not be a good thing for me. Lisa?
So wanna congratulate the Fort Mill High School Men's Soccer Team for winning state championship. Know that we have had several of our schools go to the state level, upper state level, so we continue to be strong in the arena. I know Catawba Ridge softball is still in it. So tomorrow night at the Swamp, I believe, or the Pit. I can't remember which we are. On that side. I think that side may be the Swamp.
With the rain, it might be the Swamp.
It is. But congratulations to all. It's a testament to what a good area we have and active community. Also, wanna say congratulations to all the graduates, because we won't be on film before graduation happens. So congratulations to all those, high school and college, and best of luck to you and your endeavors.
Absolutely. Ronnie?
I'm good.
Mr. Moody?
I'm good.
Mr. Wolf?
Well, being at the end of the line, everybody stole all the good stuff, so, but Fort Mill, Fort Mill High School, congratulations. I saw that Clover Girls won the state, which is also a very good school district. It's exciting to see the farmer's market and artesian market open back up. I thought that's very appropriate, because there's a lot of art-type things. That venue has grown significantly over the last couple of years and is well-attended by all generations of Fort Mill citizens and visitors too. And about half the stuff down there, I think, ends up at my house, one way or another. My family enjoys it very much. Also looking for jazz nights and the events teams, accolades to them, and all the people getting involved in events. It's a lot of work, as we talked about earlier. It's heartbreaking that the Strawberry Festival did not get to do its final, but I think Mr. Hudson's made a good statement about everybody understood why. Most everybody understood. They were disappointed, but I can't think anyone more disappointed than the team that worked so hard that was unable to do that. But we look forward to next year and just want to give them, you know, they put a lot of effort into that, and this includes the public works and the police and fire, and everybody had to be prepared. So that's, so we want to thank them for their, all their efforts.
Also, for my turn, would like to remind everyone, we're in storm season. And I think too, that the storm that had occurred in Rock Hill prior to the Strawberry Festival was a storm that wasn't predicted. It was a blow-up storm that turned very hazardous for the folks in Rock Hill with large hail and a lot of damage. So those things aren't always something we're gonna know about in advance. But I do appreciate our fire, police, public works folks doing the cleanup that they do. Now's a great time for you to go out and check the storm drains in your neighborhood and make sure they're clear and free-flowing so that you don't have flooding on your streets. Please be safe driving in and about those storms, and just know that here in the South, the summertime, we experience those pretty, pretty often, pretty often. So I'm pleased that the decision was made about the Strawberry Festival based on the safety of our community. We can have more festivals, and we will. But I think the safety of our community far surpasses the fun of an event. So thanks to each and every one of you for the effort that you put forward and for being here. I'm looking forward to. Yeah, we do have primaries coming up in June, so I would encourage everyone. We have abysmal voting rates around here. Everyone's certainly invited to exercise your right to vote, but it is also a privilege to vote, and you should do that. Particularly, it's hard to get people to run these days. It's hard to get people to consider public service, because it's not exactly the most glamorous of feels on a given day. And I admire the people that are willing to put themselves out there, so please, by all means, be a party, active part of your community.
And it's a blessing, I feel, that this is the second time York County's come and allowed us to have some early voting on this side of the river, making it convenient. So go to scvotes.org to look at what your ballot is. It pulls up specifically what yours is, so go take a look if you haven't.
And I'm gonna throw this out there. I'll challenge the candidates to take another good look at the sign ordinances, so Fort Mill doesn't turn into a, just a mess of signs. So there are specific regulations on those, so.
Right. Absolutely. I hear you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment for this evening.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And I have a second.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, this meeting is adjourned.